To order, please join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, through liberty and justice for all.
Sylvia, roll call.
Mayor Clark.
Here.
Council President Robinson.
Here.
Councilor Henderson.
Here.
Councilor King.
Here.
Councilor Kuiper.
Here.
Councilor Harris.
Here.
And Councilor Cook is absent.
Thank you. Do I have a motion to approve the agenda?
I have a motion to approve the agenda.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
None opposed? Motion carries. Next is a consent agenda. Approval of April 7, 2015, City Council Meeting Minutes. Resolution 2015-041, appointing Mayor Tom Meyer to the Budget Committee. Resolutions 2015-42, authorizing the city manager to take actions necessary for accepting the State of Oregon Department of Transportation's request for transfer of state road right-of-way portions of Southwest Langer Drive into city jurisdiction and maintenance control. Resolution 2015-044, authorizing appointment of Eric Kniefel to Parks and Recreation Board. Resolution 2015-045, authorizing appointment of Brian Amer to Parks and Recreation Board. Do I have a motion to approve consent?
A motion to approve consent agenda.
Second. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None. Motion carries. Our first presentation is a proclamation, recognition of Sherwood resident, Joe.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. We have a special proclamation for this evening. We have had a request from a citizen in town, and I'm going to ask Mr. Jakot to come up and introduce our special guest. And I know the mayor's going to read a proclamation. So Greg, can you come on up, please?
Thank you, Mayor and City Council, ladies and gentlemen. I'd like to introduce to you Harriet Mandell. She's been a Sherwood resident for 70 years. And this year, on May 2nd, we will celebrate her 100th birthday.
Wow. Woo!
And I know, Mayor, you have something to add to this.
Yes, I do. Sylvia.
I'd like to read this proclamation in recognizing and honoring Harriet Mandell on the occasion of her 100th birthday. Whereas Harriet Mandell was born in Lake Campesca, South Dakota, on May 2nd, 1915, to Ed and Harriet Hildren, and is being honored by friends, relatives, and the community on this, her 100th birthday. And whereas Harriet and her husband Howard Miller were married in 1938 and relocated to the countryside in Sherwood, Oregon in January 1945, Harriet and her first love were married 17 years before his passing in 1955. Whereas Harriet is a role model for hard work and always inspires others with her positive attitude and outlook. Harriet worked at Montgomery Ward's Department Store in Portland, Oregon for 29 years, where she met Art Mandell. They were married in 1957 for 15 joyful years. Whereas Harriet has been an active member of the community for over 70 years, always supporting the schools and youth, engaging in group classes at the local YMCA, attending Mountain Home United Methodist Church for 64 years, and remaining to this day a self-sufficient resident of Sherwood. She has inspired countless numbers with her energy and zest for adventure, and her admirable endurance has rewarded her with 100 fabulous years of a youthful and loving life. Whereas Harriet's family, friends, and community wish to honor her on this special occasion and to thank her for caring, shining spirit that resides in the dear person many known as Aunt Harriet. Now, therefore, I, Sherwood Mayor Chris Anna Clark, on behalf of the City of Sherwood, do hereby proclaim May 2nd, 2015, to be Harriet Mandell Day. Further, I declare all who know her will recognize her reply when you say, "See you next Sunday," as "I hope so, if the Lord is willing and the devil doesn't interfere."
Thank you.
Our next presentation is the Oregon Accreditation Alliance. Ed Boyd, Jeff Growth, you want to present?
Thank you, Mayor. It's my pleasure to introduce Mr. Ed Boyd. He is the Executive Director of the Oregon Accreditation Alliance. Ed, thanks for coming.
Thank you very much. That's going to be a very difficult act to follow here, I'm telling you. Good evening. My name is Ed Boyd, and I am privileged to be the Executive Director of the Oregon Accreditation Alliance, and I'm also a retired Chief of Police from the Albany Police Department. I want to thank Chief Growth for his invitation here tonight, and I am very pleased to be here to present the Sherwood Police Department with their Certificate of State Reaccreditation. Accreditation is all about standards. The law enforcement profession and our agencies are all about standards. We have standards to become a police officer to begin with, standards to be certified as an officer, and standards for the varying levels of certification that we hold through the Department of Public Safety, standards, and training. We continually preach and demand standards of accountability, standards of performance, standards of conduct. Accreditation means that an agency, their operations, their management, their policies, and procedures meet the best practices the industry has to offer. The accreditation process in general is a progressive and contemporary way of helping law enforcement agencies evaluate and improve their overall performance and provides formal and professional recognition that an organization meets or exceeds best practice expectations of service and quality in the profession. In order to be accredited, an agency must meet 102 professional standards comprised of over 400 separate requirements contained within those standards. In Oregon right now, right at 36% of all law enforcement agencies are currently involved in the accreditation program, which is up from 32% a year ago, and just a little over 23% of Oregon agencies currently hold state accreditation, and that's up from 21% just a year ago. In round numbers, there are 61 agencies in Oregon that are involved in accreditation and 39 that are accredited, so it's a very small, select group that have attained this level of recognition. It also, in my opinion, takes courage for an organization to take on the rigorous accreditation process. Anytime the chief executive officer of an organization invites an outside third party into their department to review and inspect everything associated with their operations and then render an opinion as to whether they meet a set of best-practice standards for that profession, that by itself shows commitment, transparency, and dedication to excellence. The Sherwood Police Department joined the Oregon Accreditation Alliance in 2010 and received their first award of accredited status in 2012. Once an agency receives accredited status, they are reevaluated and assessed every three years. The Sherwood Police Department was reassessed last month, and as a result of that evaluation and assessment, they were recommended for re-accreditation for their second award by the status by the Oregon Accreditation Alliance Board. It is through the commitment and direction of chiefs, sheriffs, and 911 directors that their respective agencies undertake this process to begin with. And although it is truly an agency-wide effort to achieve accreditation, specific recognition needs to be given to the accreditation managers, the point people who make it happen. Special recognition and thanks must go to Accreditation Manager Angela Hess for her outstanding work in preparing the agency for re-accreditation. It is now my distinct honor and pleasure to present Chief Jeff Growth and the Sherwood Police Department with their award of re-accreditation.
On behalf of the Oregon Accreditation Alliance Board of Directors, it's my pleasure to present your two awards to the board.
Thank you for your time.
Congratulations, Chief.
Thank you.
And the entire police department. Sherwood Main Street presentation, Lee Weislogo and Tom Pesner.
So, good evening, Council. Just a quick introduction. We've had a longstanding relationship, the city has, with business organizations in Old Town and Main Streets. Is the product of a number of different organizations, and one of the things that our agreement says with them is they will come and update us regularly. And so Lee Weislogo and Greg Jakot are here to give us an update on Main Street's activities.
I would sure thank you for the invitation and the opportunity. We like doing this regularly, and it's fun, too. I have provided some background materials for you. It's different from the PowerPoint presentation that you will be seeing. It's just to give you some background and connections and a few things that alert you to what we're involved in. I do want to introduce Greg Jakot, who's a board member and executive committee member, and he's also our treasurer, and he will now present the PowerPoint presentation.
Thank you, Mayor Clark, and the City Council and city staff. Well, we're very excited to be here because this is the first stop on our Sherwood Main Street Roadshow. This presentation can be given to any and all civic organizations that we have here, and we're really excited about that, to let people know who we are and what we do. In my opinion, this is a watershed moment, not only for Sherwood Main Street, but also for Old Town because of the Civic Arts Center. And so I'd like to start with this first slide and show you that this is the -- can you see the slides on your screen?
We do. We have them on screen.
All right, thank you. Well, just a little bit of history, real quick. We have been known as Foot, Friends of Old Town Sherwood, and Boot, Businesses of Old Town Sherwood. In 2011, we became a 501(c)(3) and with the name Sherwood Main Street. And so the slide that's in front of you, I love this slide because it shows that downtown is the heart of a community. And this picture tells a lot. When I go and show this presentation to other organizations, I can talk about the sidewalk widening project that we had, our beautiful sidewalks here where now we can have cafes out there. We have a couple walking home from the Saturday market. They buy their fresh produce or whatever. They walk home. The condominium could be right down the street. They may stop at a cafe for breakfast or something, or shop at the antique store on their way. So this photograph really describes what Old Town is all about. So I'd like to point out in this picture our Veterans Park. And again, when we go show this presentation, some people may not know or have even seen Veterans Park. So it's a good way for us to show that and say, "Hey, by the way, pretty soon we're going to have broadband right there. You can throw out your blanket and let the kids play and get on the Internet." But in this screen, I wanted you to know that there's a National Main Street Center, and they are very accessible in helping Main Street programs. And under the National Main Street Center is Oregon Main Street. Under Oregon Main Street, we have a very accessible leader, Sherry Stewart. She works for the State of Oregon, and her job is to lead Main Streets. Under Oregon Main Street, we have been to several conferences. They have conferences where we can get educated and learn about what we're doing. Again, so we're limited to 10 minutes, so I will try to keep it to that. But on this slide, we show that Sherwood Main -- Oregon Main Street has an approach where they have structured committees and procedures to follow to get to next levels. And within Oregon, we have four levels of Main Street. You can be an affiliate community, and those are people that are communities that are interested in the Main Street program, and that list is long. Then the next level is exploring downtown, and then the transforming downtown level is where Sherwood is at. And then the highest level is performing Main Street, and it's in that level that includes government support and funding. Usually, they have a full or part-time staff member there. Our Board of Directors is made up of Sherwood business owners, and the police chief is on our board. The executive board of the officers of Sherwood Main Street do not own businesses here, and it really just turned out that way, but it does -- reduces any chances of biases. Our executive board has no bias. We want to treat all businesses the same and not favor anything. So that's -- look at our board. So this next screen is more of a mission statement for us. Our purpose is to build a high-quality, livable, and sustainable Old Town community that will grow Sherwood's economy while maintaining a sense of place. And so livable, there's in the background picture are some condominiums there. We have new apartments that were just built, the Cannery Row. And growing Sherwood's economy is part of the economic development is the city's mission And making it livable, we want to make it fun downtown. So no other entity in Sherwood really focuses on Old Town, and we like to say we're a small group that brings together a coalition of a larger group. And we provide a forum where people can talk about parking, publicity, special events, vacancies, new businesses, business retention, signage, street renovations. The list goes on, and we do talk about those issues at our general meeting. So the small group that brings together a larger group, these are some of our partners. And the list is long. Oh, so some of the people in the audience may be part of these organizations, and we'd like to let them know that if you are, if you see your organization up there, let them know that we can come and talk about them and let them know what's going on in Old Town and more about Sherwood Main Street. So our focus is making Old Town a destination in the Portland area. We want people in Tigard, in Toowallington, and Newburgh and all over to want to come to Sherwood. We want to recruit and retain businesses. It's very important, the retaining part and the recruiting part is also part of the economic development. We want to strengthen relationships and communication between the businesses, the civic organizations, the building owners, the city government, and the citizens, and help put historic preservation back into the community. So in two words, our mission is to preserve and revitalize. So how do we do that? Well, finally, we have a great website, and there's some tabs on there you can see. You can click on Old Town Businesses. There's a whole list of all the businesses in Old Town. Click on Old Town Events. You get a calendar with most of the organizations in downtown. Their events are on our calendar. And then the tab that we're on right now is Meetings and Updates. So you can see our general meeting schedule is posted, and any citizen can come to that. Our information for emailing us is on there. And then if you scroll down the page a little bit more, you can see our agendas. And then we're really happy to have a donate button on our website now. So if anybody goes to that and clicks on that, you can just $5. It doesn't matter, but you can donate. But I think one of the biggest things on here is, right below that donate button, there is a printable Old Town map. And so that's a map that we developed and put together and put on the website. It's a tri-fold map. I think we handed some of those out. You may have those. But you can direct people. If you have family or friends coming to town, just go to that. You can print that map out, hand it to them, and they have a nice map of Old Town. So there's a lot going on right now with the Sherwood Center for the Arts just opening up. We love having a relationship with them where we can work with the business owners when the events are going on and have our own events. Right now, Sherwood Main Street board members are soliciting retailers, and we're trying to get interest to help fill those spots. Right now, we're attending the Cruisin' Core meetings because we are volunteering to do the trash pickup. We just had St. Patty's Day. We had Trashapalooza on Saturday, which was a great event. Had about 126 people for that. But we have the Robin Hood Festival coming up, Halloween, et cetera. But also, what we're working on is still printing and stocking those maps in places of business around here, including places that Visitors Go, the Refuge, and places like that. How are we doing? Okay. So I just wanted to show you this screen is a snapshot of our fixed costs. They're very low. So any money that we get above this just goes to back into the community for printing maps, holding events, and banners and signs and things like that. You can see from the money we collected last year, most of that was board-funded, and we did get some nice donations for our map printing. And this list is long. If we had funds and a part-time staffer intern, what would we do? But there's all kinds of things, holding events, just bringing people into downtown, having art walks or whatever. We could put on a haunted house. Halloween is really going to be, it's grown every year, and we want that to be a nice event here, bringing in people into downtown. So there's all kinds of things we could do with funds. If we had part-time staffer intern, I think writing grants and coordinating the events, reinstating First Fridays, there's all kinds of possibilities for funds and for interns. So this is just a way that Sherwood Main Street can get funds. The board funds, we get donations from people. We might have earned income, ads on our webpage, hold events, grants, government funding, et cetera. And then, but this is a huge thing. Right now, we have opportunities. There's a junior Main Street program, and we'd love to have somebody in charge of that whenever, if you need to bring youth into any organization to keep that organization vital and fresh and running. We could use a volunteer for social media administration, keeping the webpage and the social media up. We could use volunteers. If anybody has talents for events, an entertainment coordinator, and for, we need a volunteer coordinator for recruitment, training, and recognition. So there's a lot of possibilities for volunteer opportunities. So I like this picture because some people have never seen the library, and so when we go on our roadshow, we were able to show them pictures of the library in downtown Sherwood and how livable it is. So anyway, that ends, I'm sorry, it was rather fast, but our presentation for what we're doing, and we're open to questions if you have any questions now. We do have one more slide, and back to this slide, the Old Town Sherwood, the heart of our city.
Thank you. Thank you very much, Greg. And Lee, appreciate you coming. Council, did you have any questions?
I just had a question. So my understanding is the small board that you have has been doing a big job of supporting you guys and giving their own money towards donating to keep your little group going. Is that correct?
Yes. Well, it's a nonprofit, so we get to write it off. Yes. But no, it's true. The thing is, we care. We really care. I have, my kids have gone K through 12 in Sherwood, and to be honest with you, Bill lives in Tigard. He just loves Old Town Sherwood.
Hey, Bill!
We just like it, and we like the Main Street program, and I think we've built a great foundation as it is right now. We wanted to, we just show everybody that, you know, we care that much about it, and we're doing it, and that we can, we can make it work. So yes, we have.
That's impressive. Because we're not talking $50 or $100. It's been more significant personally for you guys, so I think you're to be commended for that.
Thank you.
This group has been the hardest-working group I've ever had the pleasure of being part of. I was the council liaison for quite a while to this group, and they really put it together. They come to every event and pick up trash or, you know, hand out tickets or get the water, and I have to commend you on your absolute dedication to Main Street Sherwood. And I think you're doing a fantastic job.
Thank you very much, and thank you for allowing us to be here.
A lot of enthusiasm over there.
We're excited. We're excited. There's a lot of things going on.
And a lot of moving parts.
Yes. Yep.
I would sure thank you for your support and encouragement. We wish you all well.
Thank you, Lee. And I want to say, it's a dynamic group, and there's a lot going on, a lot of great ideas. You guys seem to work really well together. Love the open forum in the meetings. Quick question for you. What did you have to do to get into the transforming downtown category?
Basically, there's a list of criteria, how you go from one to the other, but you have to go through various training times where the state Main Street coordinator comes up and talks to this subject, that subject, that subject. And she's made four trips up here.
Okay.
We've gone through a number of programs in Salem and other places to get ourselves qualified or credentialed, in essence, to qualify for that. And then when the state sees that you have made the progress, and they're very much aware that the city established the program in 2008, and we had a rare volunteer for 11 months at that time. We had some support from SERPAC and the URA Board early, and I think the state recognized that and felt a little bit like you folks have indicated, that, hey, this is something solid that is really doing something for Old Town, and let's keep it going.
The state requires us to do an annual report of what we've done during the year and how things are going, and they ask specific questions, and then they review that to make sure that you're continuing within the transforming level.
Actually, they changed it to a quarterly report.
And all that under nearly self-funded group here, so.
Yes.
Amazing. Okay.
Fantastic job. Thank you very much for coming.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next is citizen comments. I don't have any. Did I get any? Okay. So no citizen comments. Thank you very much. New business. Resolution 2015-043, authorizing the city manager to sign an intergovernmental agreement, IGA, with the Washington County Emergency Management Cooperative for the purpose of becoming a partner agency. Jeff Growth?
Thank you, Mayor, Council. So yes, you have 2015-043 in front of you. Rather straightforward. I do want to make a note that we had a work session on this, whoops, on the 17th of March, and the, I guess, director, I don't know if that's the right director, okay, of the co-op, Mr. Scott Porter joins you for that presentation, and he is also here again tonight should there be any specific questions that come up. But you have the information before you. As I said, you had a work session. Staff is recommending that we approve the IGA or approve the resolution allowing city manager to sign the IGA so we can become a part of this co-op. You know, just a couple of things, I guess, from my perspective. There's strength in numbers, not to be cliche, but there's tremendous benefit in being part of a team like this. We get the benefit of expertise that is as confident as I am with our own expertise. We get the benefit of additional brains as we work through things. And the fact of the matter is, it's pretty rare that disasters or emergencies or those kinds of things happen simply within the walls of a jurisdiction. Most of the time, they know no boundaries, and so having the relationship and the ability and working with, as a part of a co-op, is just going to strengthen our ability to be a part of the solution in those situations. If by chance we had something that was isolated to us, being a part of that co-op would leverage those resources entirely for us as opposed to going it on our own. So this just formalizes a very strong partnership. I do need to point out that the city manager is proposing a $10,000 contribution for the upcoming fiscal year in the budget that would be approved as a part of that budget process. So the way that breaks down, if you recall, is Washington County pays 51% of the cost of the co-op, and the other partner, remaining partner agencies pay 49%. So Sherwood is a portion of that, and our contribution would be $10,000 for the So Sherwood is a portion of that and, and our contribution would be 10,000 for the coming fiscal year. So at that, I'll just go with any questions, if there are any, and ask that you approve the resolution. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief. You did an excellent job in your presentation to us, as did the Washington County. I really appreciated the information and you're right. You know, we, we are not an island unto ourselves if there is an emergency. And that's why I think it's an excellent idea to join with our partners and our neighbors and Washington County and have a plan in place so that we are not left unawares. I think that this is a fantastic idea. And so which one of our neighbors has joined this, this IGA?
So I'm going to have Mr. Porter come up because he can tell you exactly, and I would be guessing and I would probably miss a few.
Okay. Thank you. I just wanted, I wanted our citizens to know. I know that you presented it to us, but...
Mayor, Counsel, members, staff. The current members of the cooperative are Twallon Valley Fire and Rescue, cities of Beaverton, Tigard, Forest Grove, Cornelius, Washington County, obviously, and Clean Water Services. The newest members are Clean Water Services and the cities of Forest Grove and Cornelius.
Thank you. Counsel, did you have any other questions? Do I have a motion?
I have a question.
Okay.
I assume that, that the IGA that's in the packet is just a copy because it says the effective date is January 1, 2013.
Yes, that's the, probably the original date of the co-op. Let me find the...
And is in effect until 2018.
Can you tell me what page that is?
It's page five of seven of the IGA.
There you go, yeah. Dated this blank day of blank 2013. Was that the original? Or maybe that was the date of this copy that went to somebody.
It looks like the date because Sherwood isn't identified. If you look on page 33 or page five of seven, it identifies all the players.
Forest Grove, Cornelius, or Clean Water Services.
There was a previously existing organization called the Office of Consolidated Emergency Management, similar arrangement, similar partnership. The effective date that's there in the IGA of July 1 of 2013 was the day that the intergovernment agreement to form the Emergency Management Cooperative went into place and the previous organization ceased to exist. And the implementation was contingent upon all of the prior partners signing the new intergovernmental agreement. And the IGA does sunset at five years from that date unless it's renewed. That's really up to the partners at the time to decide whether they want to continue with that partnership beyond the five-year date. Your partnership will become effective the day you sign the IGA.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And just, we'll just fix the date. I mean, that's pretty simple, so.
Sure.
But I hadn't seen that. Thank you.
Anybody else? Do I have a motion?
I'll move we adopt Resolution 2015-043.
I'll second.
All in favor? Aye. None opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Counsel. We have a public hearing tonight on Ordinance 2015-004, amending Chapter 7 of Volume 2 of the Sherwood Comprehensive Plan and adopting the Sherwood Water System Master Plan. Brad Kilby? This will be our first reading.
Sylvia, do you have her reading? Yes, Mayor, I do have a script to read for the public.
Thank you.
The Sherwood City Council will hold a public hearing this evening to hear testimony on Ordinance, I'm sorry, 2015-004, amend Chapter 7 of Volume 2 of the Sherwood Comprehensive Plan and adopting the Sherwood Water System Master Plan. The purpose of the hearing is to provide the public with an opportunity to submit testimony on the above said item. The meeting would be conducted in this order, is to hear the staff report, receive any correspondence, receive public testimony, receive additional staff comments and then questions from the council. The hearing will then be closed or continued and no further testimony will be received. Discussion by the council will follow. Any interested person may present testimony. If you wish to speak, please fill out the testimony form provided in the back of the room and submit it to the city recorder. The mayor will then recognize any, those persons wishing to speak and any questions should be addressed through the mayor. When you come to the microphone, please state your name and address for the record as this hearing will be recorded. Please limit your testimony to four minutes.
Thank you, Sylvia. Brad?
Thank you, Madam Mayor and council members. I don't know, Brad hasn't put it up yet. Let me see if, do you see the?
Yes, we've got it.
On yours? Okay, there we go. So two things will happen tonight. Hopefully you'll adopt the Water System Master Plan. And to that end, I'm going to let the consultant, Heidi Springer, present the Water System Master Plan. And then I'll come back and talk to you about the comprehensive plan amendments that we're proposing and from that, so if that's okay.
Thank you.
Good evening, Heidi Springer. This is an abridged version of the presentation that I showed to the council at the work session. It's mostly to set some context for the public should they have questions. So Water System Master Plan. First of all, what is the purpose of a Water System Master Plan? This is required by the Oregon Health Authority's Drinking Water Program for all public drinking water providers that have more than 300 customers. Our goal with this document for the city is to create a long-term guidance document that evaluates your existing water system and plans for future facility upgrades that may be needed, both for existing customers and to serve potential growth and expansion of the water system. The Water System Master Plan includes these components. We document existing water system facilities, so what you have in place right now. Create an estimate of potential growth within your water service area and potential expansion through a 20-year planning horizon, and that's again defined by state requirements. We then establish criteria for evaluating the water system and identify deficiencies within the existing water system. These deficiencies are addressed with recommended improvement projects, which are presented in a capital improvement program. The capital improvement program sets cost to recommended projects, estimated costs, I should say, and sets a prioritization for when those projects might occur. The project, the primary facilities that we looked at are your water supply and then your distribution system, meaning the pipes and pump stations that provide water to your homes. So for the water supply, the city's current supply comes from the Willamette River Water Treatment Plant in the city of Wilsonville. Your existing 5 million gallon per day capacity that the city of Sherwood owns in this plant meets existing peak demands for the city. And existing wells within the city are used to provide an emergency backup supply. With the city's supply as it is, there is no need to continue purchasing water from the city of Portland through the 24-inch transmission main that the city of Sherwood owns that runs from here to the city of Tuallaton to connect to that Portland supply. Future water supply would be anticipated when and if growth occurs to come from the Willamette River Water Treatment Plant. You do have some capacity remaining there for growth that you already own and have constructed. And we would also expect any expansion to occur from that supply. For the city's distribution system, we looked at your storage reservoirs and pump stations. All of these facilities have adequate capacity to meet projected demands through your 20-year planning horizon. There are a few new pump stations that are recommended to serve growth beyond 20 years. Again, these are projected growth, so these pump stations would not be constructed unless development did occur. For your distribution piping, we use a computerized hydraulic model to evaluate the pipes that you have in the ground, mainly focusing on fire flow capacity and adequate service pressure within your system. So based on our evaluations of those systems, the projects that are recommended, Willamette River Water Treatment Plant upgrades, there are a few upgrades needed at the treatment plant to serve both existing and future customers and achieve this, the city's full 5 million gallon per day capacity. These were previously identified through some facility work at the treatment plant itself. We would also be planning in the longer term for a capacity expansion at the Willamette River Water Treatment Plant, again, as growth occurred. Pump stations, again, those are recommended to serve potential growth in the long term. And we also wanted to highlight a few planning and operation improvements. The city is due for a SCADA system upgrade. The SCADA system is the computer brain of your water system. With advances in technology, these systems generally are more cost-effective to replace within 10 to 15 years rather than to continue to maintain an older system. We also recommend to look at a resiliency plan within the next few years. That's in coordination with the Oregon Resiliency Plan, which looks at response and recovery goals in the event of a Cascadia Subduction Zone earthquake. These recommended improvements lead us to the Capital Improvement Plan or program. The goal of the Capital Improvement Program is to provide a roadmap for the city to plan long-term improvements for the water system, plan both for existing, excuse me, projects to serve existing customers and also those that provide for growth when and if it occurs. The prioritization of projects within the CIP is reviewed annually through Sherwood's budgeting process. Of the projects identified within the CIP, there are 36.2 million through saturation development of the service area, so very long-term growth. From those 34 million would be expected to serve growth within the system and only 2.2 million for existing facilities for existing customers.
Take it away. Thanks, Heidi. So along with the update to the Water System Master Plan, we need to, sort of need to update our comprehensive plan. And our comprehensive plan is just that. It's a comprehensive plan for all things within the city. And Chapter 7 of that comprehensive plan is dedicated to public facilities. And so within our public facilities chapter of the comprehensive plan, we discuss our water system. And we discuss the existing conditions, the future growth assumptions, the needed improvements to that system. We don't get to the level of cost and prioritization that comes from you, the council, every time you look at the Capital Improvement Plan. But we memorialize, I guess, those components into our comprehensive plan. And that document serves as a long-range document that can then transcend different councils so that everybody's staying on some narrow and straight path. Within, specific to the proposal before you tonight, the comprehensive plan amendments would be to update our table of contents, updating Objective B7 to remove old plan dates and make relevant to the current time period. We would be changing the Unified Sewerage Agency to Clean Water Services. So what I'm, what I've done is some basic housekeeping from the beginning of that chapter up to the water system discussion. And then in that next thing, I've replaced the entire section under the Water Service Plan to coincide with what's being proposed under this Water System Master Plan for 2015. So we would also then ask that the 2015 Water Master Plan be adopted as an appendix to the comprehensive plan. It should be a technical document that associate, that is associated with the comprehensive plan so that people can refer back and, back and forth between the two to understand how you come to your decisions. Just a couple of things to note. The comprehensive plan was not updated with the Water System Master Plan in 2005. And so following this, we will also be looking to amend the comprehensive plan for the sewer master plan as it's updated and the stormwater master plan as it, as it's updated. And we will, for the most part, have then Chapter 7 of Volume 2 updated and we'll have a foundation without going through the goals and policies that we'll ultimately adopt as we do the comprehensive plan. And then finally, I guess, the proposed amendments would not adjust visa rates. That's an entirely separate action that's incumbent upon you as the council as you set your priorities for some of the capital improvements that have been identified in their plan. With that, the Planning Commission held a public hearing and recommends that the council approve the proposed amendments to Chapter 7 of the comprehensive plan, adopt the Water System Master Plan, and then also adopt it as an appendix to the comprehensive plan. And barring any questions from you, that concludes my presentation.
Thank you, Pran. I'll open up the public hearing. Do we have any questions?
I don't have any.
None? Okay. I'll close the public hearing, open it up to council. Do you have any questions? Okay. We just had a work session on this, so that might be why our questions are sort of brief, nonexistent. But I will, I will, I guess, with consent of council, I'll make a motion in the reading of the first, since this is the first reading. I move that the city council approve Ordinance 2015-004 and place it on the next available city council meeting agenda for additional public comment and consideration. Amending Chapter 7, I missed the first, so I'm going to continue on now. Amending Chapter 7 of Volume 2 of the Sherwood Comprehensive Plan and adopting the Sherwood Water System Master Plan.
Start it.
Sylvia, do we read?
Mayor, at this point, you can just ask for a general call.
Okay. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? None? Motion carries. We'll move to the second reading.
Madam Mayor, just, just for the public, you might, so the 28th is a special meeting, so we won't be reading it at that meeting.
Right. So it'll be, it'll be the next regular meeting as opposed to the next available meeting because that is a special meeting.
Thank you.
And that will be May 5th is the next regularly scheduled meeting. Thank you. Thank you for the clarification, Brad.
Yes, ma'am.
City Manager, report.
Actually, Mayor and Counsel, I don't have anything to report on. I think some of the counselors have attended some of the events and I won't steal their thunder unless you have questions for myself or any of the directors that are here.
Any questions? Okay.
Thank you.
All right. So on to council announcements. We did have a vigorous weekend, this last weekend, I have to say. It was fabulous, fantastic. Council started on Saturday with the Adopt a Road cleanup and we had some fun surprises. As we were going along doing our Adopt a Road cleanup, first thing that we noticed was there wasn't a lot of garbage, which is not a bad thing. And Counselor King and Harris and Robinson and myself and Counselor Kuiper were all there with our kids. And Counselor King and Kuiper ran across a couple of wonderful Sherwood residents coming towards them as they were cleaning up. And the gals said, "What are you doing?" And so they said, "Well, we're, you know, Potter City Council and we're doing our Adopt a Road cleanup." And so these ladies said, "Well, you know what? We clean this street every single day." And that's why it's so mightily clean. So we thank those two residents. If you ever want to come in, we will absolutely recognize you for your contribution in keeping our section of the road clean. Thank you very much.
It was, it was amazing. And I, Counselor King, do you remember their names? Jane, Jane Kelly, maybe, if you're out there, your sister.
They were fantastic. So great. That, that just screams Sherwood to me. So thank you very much, ladies, for having such a dedication and pride in our cities that, that you're, you're willing to clean the streets, just walking down the street every single day. That's fantastic. So we went from the Adopt a Road cleanup and Counselor Harris and I joined, and Counselor Kuiper had her own Girl Scout team, joined the Trash Palooza. And it was a huge screaming success. Second largest event, solvent event, in the state of Oregon that day. 129 participants, 15 teams, enough trash collected to fill a three-yard dumpster donated by Pride. PGE sponsored the event and Jim Puro, the CEO for PGE, was on their team. I had an opportunity to talk with him and it was really fun because his... I had an opportunity to talk with him, and it was really fun, because his comment was, "Gosh, your streets are clean," which is fantastic. And I actually think it is a tribute to this program. This is the third year that we've done the Trash Palooza, thanks to our student that started it, Nadia Balaf, started this program. And I think—because I—I went last year, and I think every year, there is less trash, because we are so thorough and, I think, so respectful of our surroundings. So, thank you, thank you, thank you to everyone who came. It was super, and, boy, did we hit a home run in the day and the beautiful sun. So, we lucked out with that. There—there were PG—there were teams there from PGE, Target, Boy and Girl Scouts, Warring—they were having a little—it was awesome. City Council and the YMCA. So, thanks to everyone, and then lots of just residents that—that came. So, thanks to everybody who came. The Washington County Cooperative Library Services grand finale was at our Art Center that evening, Saturday evening. It was the grand finale of The Art of the Story. Roses catered the event. It was amazing. 503 Uncorked came and did wine serving for us. And we had a packed audience, and I had the opportunity to give a little presentation. And I asked, while I was there, how many people traveled outside of Sherwood, and more than half of the hands went up. So, we got a great, big, huge shout-out for our brand-new Art Center, which was fabulous. The presenters were amazing, and it was a great event. I scoot out and joined Counselor Kuiper for the Green Heron Event to—that is the fundraising event for the Twalton River Keepers. The Twalton River Keepers are the people who support our Twalton River National Wildlife Refuge, and it was also a fantastic event. I look forward to it every year, and I really appreciate Counselor Kuiper joining me. She is our liaison to the Friends of the Refuge, and they are just—the—
Great organization.
—the River Keepers are just an amazing organization. So, thank you to them for housing that event. Last week, the City of Sherwood hosted a community leadership event to start the discussion about suicide prevention. I want to thank Joe Gall, our City Manager, for starting this program out. We had a death in our community, and City Manager jumped and said, "We need to start a discussion about this, and how, as a community, can we open up the discussion about this?" And so, we invited many community leaders. We had a great group there. We had a big group from Washington County. The Washington County Police were there. They were—the—they were amazing. And Amy Baker, School-Based Services Coordinator and Suicide Prevention Coordinator, did a marvelous presentation, very eye-opening, so great, that we're going to do it again. And so, what was the date?
Targeting a date.
We're targeting a date in May.
21st is the target at this point.
School Board was there, many leaders from our youth sports community were there, many of our faith community leaders were there. It—it was a great event. Counselors Harris, Robinson, and Kuiper and I all went, and so, we're going to do it again, because, you know, not everyone who was invited was able to attend, and we want to give everybody an opportunity to—to come up for a plan for Heron Sherwood, because when we talk about problems, that's how we solve problems.
I would like to say something right now, on behalf of the family who's—that happened to. That woman is—the grandmother is my best friend, and there's no one in that family that believes that was a suicide. And if you could talk to anybody in that family, they will all tell you their reasons why that child did not fit any of the criteria or the profile of a child committing suicide. That is not to say it's not a good forum to have, but based on the fact that everybody's assuming that was a suicide, it's not okay with me and not fair to the family.
Okay.
I just want to say that.
This is a public session, and so, we—we prefer not to have outbursts, so thank you very much for—
Because it upsets me.
So, we will be hosting that second event and opening up that community conversation to address this issue. I wanted also to say that we will be having a town hall here. I'm very sad to be missing it. I'm going to be next week at the J-Pact lobbying trip in DC, but Sheriff Pat Garrett and Chief Growth are going to be hosting both of our—our senator and our representative, and talking about Measure 91 in a town hall. It will be 6:30 at the Sherwood Police Department next Wednesday, April 29th. So, please come. Everyone is welcome. Counselor Kuiper.
Okay. Wow. So much to say, and so little time, but I won't say a whole lot, because everyone else has got a lot going on, too. Went to the volunteer dinner for the city volunteers, which was a great event. It was on April 14th, which I believe was a Thursday. Right? Okay. And that was—basically, the city was thanking the volunteers who volunteer for the city. We had lots of library volunteers and city police. So, there was a lot of volunteers from the Sherwood City Police. Great event. Tammy Stephens did a great job pulling it together, and I think it's probably going to be bigger next year. So, was really happy to attend that. I just wanted to say something that hasn't been said before, but Milli, the Thoroughly Modern Milli musical, is coming up this weekend at the high school and next weekend. I went to—to take a peek at what the high school kids were doing last night, and they are fantastic. There's tap dancing, there's quite a number of kids onstage that have a powerful set of pipes, let me tell you, and they were belting it out and having a great time. So, shows start at 7:30 Thursday, Friday, Saturday of this weekend, Thursday, Friday, Saturday of next weekend. So, if you have a chance and you want to go see some incredible talent right here in town—I've—I've had other jurisdictions come up to me and other people that I know, amazed at the young talent that we have in Sherwood. So, if you get a chance to come and—and see Thoroughly Modern Milli at the high school, that'd be great. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Henderson.
Some of those same very talented high schoolers also won the Fourth Annual Rose City Sing-Off, and I guess unreined Wilsonville High School, who had won it three years in a row. So, like to congratulate them. That is a high school a cappella group, and as a result of that win, they will be singing in the Road Festival Parade, as well as singing at the Court's or Queen's Coronation. So, that's a great way to represent Sherwood outside of Sherwood. A lot of those same kids, of course, are in Thoroughly Modern Milli. Let's see. Community Development Block Grant Board adopted the draft of the 2015 to 2020 Consolidated Plan and Action Plan, which will go to the county for their approval. At the Senior Center, we've had some—we have a partner, obviously, at the Senior Center with Meals on Wheels. They have a new CEO and a new Chief Operating Officer. Those individuals, Suzanne Washington and Randa Wilson, came from an organization called Impact Northwest, and I'm not sure what that means for our community, but looking forward to the opportunity. They'd like to come out and visit every center, so that should be probably happening in the next few months. Want to thank both Public Works, as well as IT, Brad—I know you're back there somewhere. Brad made a house call to the Senior Center. We had two seniors. One of them was disabled, and they were having difficulty with their internet connection. And Brad went to the Senior Center way above and beyond the call of duty, as far as staff at the Senior Center, as well as the seniors, are concerned, and helped them get that problem fixed. And then, Public Works has—you've guys have sent out bids to replace the patio in the—in the Senior Center, which will be a great improvement, because that places a trip hazard tremendously. They have a couple of performances coming up this Friday, and on May 1st, the Laurel Ridge Choir will be singing at the Senior Center. And today, they had a—Friends of the Sherwood Senior Center took a bus trip to Tillamook, and they had 24 seniors go on the trip. And I—I don't know if their weather was as nice over there as at least started out here. But would like to thank the Friends Church, who loans the Senior Center their bus and assumes the liability for that. And they can't fit 24 seniors on that bus, so a number of other seniors also drove. But that's a fantastic turnout, if you ask me, if our seniors are interested in, you know, taking a trip together at a very reasonable cost. And I think that's part of the role of the Senior Center. I did not attend the last Police Advisory Board meeting, as we had a death in our family, and—but to my understanding, they are just getting up and running, based on the agenda. I don't know if Captain Daniel wanted to update anything that was discussed there. I know he's not prepared to do that by the look on his face. Oh, and you weren't—okay. Well—
They decided to hold a meeting and just focus on expanding introductions and getting to—to know each member as a group.
Kind of a repeat?
Yep.
Okay. And—oh, the Senior Center has their Steering Committee meeting tomorrow. They haven't met for two months, so I'll have a report next time on any facility issues from the Senior Center.
Okay. Thank you. Counselor President Robinson?
I, too, have on my list to thank Joe for the wonderful meeting we had last week with the community leaders. I think I learned quite a bit of information. I didn't know that suicide was such an epidemic in our society. And I—regardless of any particular one event happening, it is an issue that needs to be discussed, as well as all mental health issues. And thank you to Counselor Harris for asking Joe to start the conversation. And I think it will be really valuable to us as community leaders. And the Washington County Representative, who taught the class, was actually really impressed with the City of Sherwood asking them to come out and have and start the discussion, because she said she had never had a city ask her to come out and do a presentation. So, we're ahead of the curve. And I also wanted to mention that one of the requests and kind of goals or possibilities we had talked about was putting that presentation and other links, perhaps, to websites or or call lines, call centers, that could be utilized, be placed on the city website. So, just one of the many possibilities of things we might do as a collective group to address the issue. So, I look forward to more and more meetings and information, and I encourage every single person in in Sherwood to go to the website, once we do get something up on that, and attend the meeting, if you can, to learn about a very, very important subject. And it's not just our youth, actually. One of the highest rates of suicide is actually our seniors. So, that puts it at the very important level of every single person needing to know some information about it. Secondly, the Westside Economic Alliance this Thursday is having a meet-and-greet-your-Westside mayors, and our mayor will be there. And I think a couple of councilors and I are going to watch her speak, as well as the city manager, so that's exciting. Next, we have a special meeting next Tuesday, April 28th, to hear the first reading of our medical marijuana ordinance that we have been provided as a recommendation to—from the Planning Commission. We will proceed with that first reading, as our charter now requires that we have two hearings to hear about that. So, you are welcome to come to the public hearing and give us your comments and thoughts on that next Tuesday. Next Wednesday, I will be attending the Medical Marijuana Forum, and I look forward to that with our state representative, John Davis, and Senator Thatcher. And I must say that John Davis has been absolutely so welcoming to feedback, especially from me and I know other councilors here, so that we are actually getting some—not notoriety, but real information that's going back and forth between the state level and our local level. And it's really important that we tap into some new resources and make sure our voices are for what we need for Sherwood are heard. So, I'm really impressed with the mayor's efforts to really explore matters on the state level that—that Sherwood can benefit from, and I appreciate those efforts. And lastly, just a reminder that our open house is going to occur on May 21st in about a month. On the Sherwood West Preliminary Concept Plan, Citizen Advisory Committee is holding an open house for all persons to come, ask questions about how far we've gotten and what we've observed so far. And I have to say that the consultant we're using is just fabulous. I think she's doing a really, really good job. So, there we go.
Thank you. Counselor Harris?
So, I also want to comment on our Suicide Prevention Meeting that we went to. I think regardless of what family we may or may not be talking about, the reality is, in Oregon, Oregon is the ninth-highest rate of suicide. So, I don't think it matters—I don't think we have to target one—one family for this situation to be important to our community. It is the ninth. Oregon is number nine for suicide, and our highest rate of suicide is for 65 and over, men, 65 and over, which is a huge part of our population. So, I—I left that meeting with a lot of hope. One of the myths that she told us about was that if somebody's going to commit suicide, they're just going to do it. There's not anything you can do about it. And what we learned is that's just simply not true, that—that there is something that you can do about it, and just talking about it is starting to do something about it. We have such a stigma about talking about it. I went to another meeting the next day, and I was so excited about the information I'd learned and the—the opportunity and the hope that we could bring to our community, that I wouldn't stop talking about it. And every person in the meeting was just like, "Is she ever going to stop talking about it?" Because they were so incredibly uncomfortable with it. And so, I think part of the reason we are all talking about it up here and hoping that you will go out and talk about it is because talking about it is the first step. I know that my life has been affected by suicide more than once, and I'm sure that if you polled the audience, everybody knows someone either closely related to them or not far down the—the family tree that—or friend tree that may have been a victim of of suicide. So, I think it's super important. I think it's awesome that we were the first city that she has ever had come out and want this training. I think it's awesome that Joe decided to bring all of these entities in our—our group together, to see the high school football coach there, along with city council, along with school, along with clergy. I mean, it was a pretty—pretty amazing sight to see all these people who are interested in just taking care of our community. There was no other reason to be there, other than to help mental health in our community, which I'm pretty passionate about. I'm just going to throw it out there, too. The Suicide Crisis Line is 503-291-9111. You don't have to call it just because you're thinking of committing suicide. If you have questions about suicide, if you're interested in learning more about suicide, you can call them, and they can point you in the right direction. So, I think it was fantastic, and I'm still a little bit excited to learn more and to take that out into our community, and hopefully make Sherwood a zero-suicide community, because it can be done. Also, for the library, we had a meeting recently, and—and there's lots of events you can read about on the library website, but I really want to talk about Adrienne Culkin. She's in the back, back there. She is amazing. She doesn't know I'm calling her out, but in our library meeting, she talked about some different situations that she had with some of the patrons of the library, one of them being a family that she does her Paperback Pals group with, and that family has an autistic child and has—that child has trouble hearing. And so, she told them about a library that has Braille books for checkout for that child. And she just has this amazing, positive, exciting outlook about the library that I've never seen before for a public library. And so, I just wanted to shout her out and say that we could not have hired a better person to manage our library. Our programs and the things that she's bringing in to get people coming and interested in our library are just amazing, and so, I think you deserve claps.
Yay, Adrienne!
Our cultural arts group did not meet. I think I was the first one to call in sick, but then several others did also, so they canceled. Sherwood's a sick little town this month, I guess. I also wanted to say that our school board, not a lot going on there, but if anybody's been— been following the Kai story with little, the little guy in Special Ed Who Needs His Dog and the back and forth, I'm happy to report, because I work there, Kai is on his second day in our class. So they have come to a conclusion, actually, somebody volunteered, somebody from our community volunteered, stepped up to be the dog handler for free for the rest of the school year. So we don't know what will happen the following year, but right now Kai and John are connected and together. So that's a really exciting thing to happen, I think, in some of our schools. Also, my kids go to Edie Ridge. Our carnival is on Friday. It's 5:30 to 8:30. It's super fun. It is the craziest carnival I have ever seen, and I've been to some of the other schools. They have been working on this carnival for about two months. They have had work parties for decorations every single Wednesday night. I mean, they go way over the top, beyond anything that should be a normal school carnival, honestly. So I encourage you to come, bring your friends and family. It's really, really fun. I know, I think you did the dunk tank one year, didn't you?
Yeah, two years ago, because Heather Cordy couldn't make it, so she has me.
We have a dunk tank with some people in it, and it's super fun. Also, if you have any spare two-liter sodas laying around, they are asking for donations of those. The ring toss is one of the most popular events, and they need two liters. So if you've got an old one from a party that you think you'll never drink, drop it off. I'd be happy with it.
But they have to be full.
Yes, they do need to be full. Unopened. Thank you. And that's all I have.
Thank you, Counsel Harris. Counselor King?
Yeah, sure. My mic on here. Being newly assigned to Sherwood Main Street, I've kind of getting caught up to speed what's going on over there. And they had that presentation tonight, so I think everyone got a sense of how important and how critical their function is in our community. They didn't mention, though, that their website is sherwoodmainstreet.org. I just want to make sure everyone knew that. And I have to say that it's a very enthusiastic crowd. It's a lot of moving parts, and so if you want to find out what is going on in the community, since there are so many organizations involved with it, go on the website, and you can find out what's going on and what their needs are. One thing they didn't mention during the presentation was their theme for this year. It's Sherwood, One Community for Everyone. So that's what they're doing for their theme, and I'm excited. If you want to join in their meeting, it's on Thursday mornings, on the third Thursday of the month, at 8:00 AM, so it's bright and early. So, anyway, it's a fun group. So that's what I got.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you. We do have a URA Board Meeting after this, and I just want to thank council. You guys are awesome to work with. So do I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn. Second.
My mic's not on. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. We are adjourned.